It will not be normal.
No, I don't think that they will be normal.
When they get normal, people won't find it easy to get accommodated with it because they're used to the rough, rough time now, you know?
Oh, I hope not. I hope not, Cal, but you're probably right here.
It's six o'clock. I'm gonna wait another fifteen seconds.
Okay. The recording has started. And we are waiting for Angelina. So we have enough, we have a call.
Enough to start? Okay, she can join in late, it's fine. I'd like to call, call to order Airway Heights Planning Commissioner meeting, May 12, 2021, at 6:01 PM. Do a roll call quickly. Cal Patel, present, Commissioner Hank.
Present.
Commissioner Mark.
Present.
Mr. Angelina? I think she'll join us a little later, right?
Yeah, that might have been her right there. Sorry, I'm bouncing screens right now. Yeah, there she is.
You seen?
It's starting right now. I'll call you.
We'll, we'll consider you present, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next item will be pleasure of Lance. Are we gonna play the choreography or we're gonna sing?
Give me just one second. I got it up.
Oh, that's good.
There you go.
Nice, nice.
No music?
No, no music, just the word. We're gonna go in three, two, one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
I like that. This is good.
Awesome.
This is now gonna be a standard, okay?
Nice.
All right, we don't, we like, I like to get a motion to amend the agenda for tonight to add, introduce the new applicant for the commissioner Stephanie Lamb at the workshop if somebody wants to call a motion to make that change.
Cal, I'll make a motion to add in an introduction to Stephanie Lamb.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next thing will be the approval of minutes of Wednesday, April 12, 2021. Somebody wants to make a motion?
Cal, I'll make another motion to approve the agenda or the minutes from, or the agenda, sorry, from May 12.
Minutes.
Minutes, minutes. I apologize.
Minutes from Wednesday, April 12, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have any public comments tonight. We are not having any presentations. There's no public hearing today, so I'm gonna jump straight into action item. And we have a new applicant. Her name is Stephanie Lamb and she's joining us tonight. I would like to take this opportunity to have any of the commissioners or any staff members, anybody wants to ask her any questions? And if she wants to introduce herself, she's more than welcome to do that.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. Just got off of work, just got home, so sorry, I'm a little bit late.
No, you're right on time, Stephanie.
Um, so yeah, Stephanie Lamb, I've lived in Airway Heights for 11 years, bought my first house here. Then I've worked in, I worked in Airway Heights for about five years. Excited about the growth here. I mean, my property values are great now. But yeah, I was a military spouse for 14 years. I, I worked primarily at home for a long time, but I've always been interested in kind of any growth opportunity anywhere. So, you know, being involved with something like this, being able to see the town that I live in grow is, is a huge thing. So I am, I am grateful for the opportunity to talk to you guys and if you guys have any questions, let me know.
I guess we, we, we were gonna interview you if there was multiple candidates, but in this case, I guess you're the only one, so. I don't have any questions to ask you, but I just wanna bring it to your attention that we do appreciate you taking interest in the planning commissioner and this is a good starting point for anybody who wants to get involved in the city moving forward. Most of the planning commissioners are now council people, so you know, it's, it's a good way to start. Once the council approves you, I would like to welcome you, but it's a little bit of hard work. We expect you to be prepared for the meetings so that, you know, the documentation goes out almost a few days before. And, you know, we, our first agenda is to look out for Airway Heights. So, you know, that's it. Anybody else wanna ask any questions or?
I'll say, sorry, go ahead, Hank.
Okay, thanks, Mark, sorry.
No, no problem.
Hi, Stephanie, good evening. I'm Hank Beinaker and I'm pretty new to the commission myself. And one of the things that I noted on your application, and I appreciate your interest, by the way, but you said something in reference to you're bringing a unique perspective to the commission. I was just curious, what, what is that, what does that mean exactly?
For me, it is, I'm relatively young. I'm only thirty-six and I, I've been a homeowner here since I bought my house when I was twenty-five. So, and I've lived here for seventeen years. We lived on the military base for six years prior to here. So I think just my longevity in the city is, is huge. I've seen it grow from, you know, yokes and two trailer parks to now everything that it is. And I, I, I would love to, you know, see it grow more. So I guess that's for me, like, I've seen it from the military standpoint and living off base and doing, you know, most of my shopping there. And to now see and have opportunities to have other businesses come in and things like that, like, I guess that's where I was coming from, just the fact that I've lived here in Airway Heights or right next to it for so long.
Okay.
Because honestly, you get, you guys may have and may also, but I wasn't sure, so.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Mark?
Yeah, like I said at the beginning of this, I've known Stephanie for quite a few years now. I got introduced to her working with another cannabis farm. And like she says, she brings a unique experience. I've seen how she'll give me my own, or her own advice with life and everything, and it's always different than mine. So when I was thinking about these open spots on the commission, I encouraged Stephanie to apply because she has that unique experience from the Air Force standpoint. And then also living in the city as a civilian also. And just thought that would be a good fit with the commission as we're bringing in a diverse group.
Thank you, Mark, for encouraging her to join, you know, it helps.
Yes.
It helps. Anybody else wanna have any questions? Stephanie, you have any questions for us?
No, I mean, I've, I've considered kind of running for things before. I've considered getting more involved, but I didn't have the time. I've been kind of on an upward path in my industry for the past few years. And now I feel like I'm kind of able to back off a little bit and so have time to explore other things that I'm very interested in. And being involved in public service is definitely one of those things.
No, we really like, we appreciate you coming aboard. Thank you. And the only thing is, you know, it's only a once a month meeting, but you'll be surprised how difficult it's gonna be for you when it comes to Wednesday and say, wow, I got a meeting today, I got ten things to finish. We just expect everybody to commit to that one day a month and it is important to everybody.
Yeah, but all the pay makes up for it, Cal.
Yeah, I know. I forgot to tell her about the pay and the benefits, but.
Well, as long as they're, you know, comparable to the benefits I have now, oh, wait.
I think the benefits is the knowledge and, and how you start seeing how the city works and you interact with everybody and it's up to you how much effort you put into this whole thing and where it takes you. You know, you could sit back, laid back and just listen to us or you can make comments, opinions, there's other positions in the city too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add before we move on to? To, what's the next workshop?
Mr. Chair, did, did you go through the opportunity for public comment on the agenda tonight?
I did, but there's no public comments, right? I asked.
We did have.
Okay, sorry. I moved fast. I moved fast, sorry. I should have paused there, you know. Do we have anybody, by the way, just in case? Zach, anybody signed up?
Uh, no one signed up. Um, we, we did have one member of the public, but it appears that she is no longer in the chat, so.
Oh, I, I kind of pissed her off, I guess. Sorry, I apologize. I was hinted early that everybody wants to go out and enjoy the sun, so I was moving a little faster tonight. I apologize. Now I can slow down when the workshop comes, right? No, come on. I'm gonna hand the workshop to Heather.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair and commission members. We have several items for workshop this evening. One of them is the 2022 Conference of Plan Update. The other one will be the Public Art Funding Ordinance and the Creation of a Public Arts Commission. Zach will be doing the Smart Growth America Grant update for you and then we'll move into commissioner reports. So in the packet that you received last week, there are copies of the proposal for the 2022 Conference of Plan. And I'm just gonna back up one step and that is, this was and has been part of a long-term goal of the City Council to do a substantial update to the Conference of Plan, including doing visioning. And part of this was as a result of the dramatic growth in Airway Heights, so something like there almost twenty-nine percent growth from 2020 to 2018, so that's three years. And then just most recently, Zach crunched the numbers and found that we'd actually grown sixty-three point seven percent since 2010 to 2020, so some, some big growth and clearly people can see all of their residences and businesses and industry cropping up here, so. While we just finished a Conference of Plan in June of last year, that had always been intended to be a compliance document. And one of the reasons we did compliance was because under the Washington State Growth Management Act 3670A, as long as we did not have our periodic update adopted along with necessary changes to our development regulations, we were not eligible for state funds, certain grants specifically that would, we would be eligible for parks and public works. So that work was to get a compliant or periodic update, get us into compliance, which we did achieve early this year. So now we are moving forward with the new vision and then you've got comprehensive plan. And so the council set aside funds in the planning department budget for, for the next year to hire consultant. And we did do a competitive bid process. We sent it out to a number of consulting firms with the opportunity to bid on a scope that included a visioning and community engagement process as well as the comprehensive plan or to provide a proposal for both. And we did receive four responses. We put together a committee which included representation from the city, which included Kevin from Public Works, which most of you have met, he's our Public Works Director, as well as Angelina Campobasso here from our Plan Commission. And Larry Bowman, our council member, also volunteered to be on that committee. We met, went through all of the proposals. We used an agreed set of criteria to score and we awarded the contracts to the two highest scoring firms that responded to the RFP and those are Big Sky, Big Sky Public Relations, which you see their proposal in the packet. They proposed to not only do the community engagement, but to also do the visioning exercise with our community as the primary lead and framework was the consultant that scored the highest to prepare the comprehensive plan based on that visioning process and the updates that would potentially be impacted by that new visioning. So the project is working on being under contract. The City Council did approve both consulting firms for work. It was a little bit over our original budget, but planning department, we, we scoured and scrubbed and, and found some money so that we can get a full host of services for this project and we expect to kick off later this month with those two consultants. So I can certainly pull up the proposals to show them to you, but we're super excited. I wanna give you a little bit of background on both firms and then we'll kind of walk through the timeline. So Big Sky recently did the public relations and community engagement around the West Plains Connect, which was the proposed new boulevard concept that would go through Airway Heights to the city of Spokane on Sixth Avenue, which transitions to Tenth Avenue and then Twelfth Avenue as the entrance to the city of Spokane. So they not only built a website, they did pushouts through social media, they did articles or created articles to go out in local newspapers and generated a really lot of buzz about the project. And they had a phenomenal response. I think the survey, the first survey that they did on that project alone had sixteen hundred responses to it. So we do have working experience with them. They actually work directly through the West Plains Public Development Authority, which is S3R3, but we have an agreement between City Spokane, the PDA and Airway Heights for this project. Framework also has been working in this area and they've been developing the downtown plan for the city of Spokane, which just now is going to public hearing for the Plan Commission for the city of Spokane. So they have been working here locally on a similar type of, of projects, doing work with regards to opportunities. You know, what's the vision? How, how are they gonna help City Spokane move forward? So with that, I will pull up probably Frameworks' scope because I think that it gives the best overview of the timeline for the project. And at this point, are there any questions from the commission members?
How many people applied for the RFQ total?
Four people submitted proposals, four consulting firms submitted proposals.
I just wanted to see the interest that people had in this project.
That was something that I did do before sending out the RFP was I contacted a number of firms off of the Department of, excuse me, the Municipal Research Center, which is a free service that the city has access to. But it is a way in which we can get qualified consultants in a variety of areas and we became basically a member of that, that system. So it helps us greatly because it will get a wide variety of consultants, putting their names on that roster and then we, we use that roster solicit for getting proposals from agencies, but so we were able to call ahead of time and see if there would be interest and there, there definitely was, so. Happy with the response. Not everybody that was contacted submitted an RFP, but I think that we did get a good cross-section. So here's the timeline that's proposed for this project. So the kickoff will be this month. We're just now working on a schedule with our consultants. We have sub consultants, for example, TO Engineering is doing the transportation element. Bill White is our principal in that area and so he'd be joining as part of the kickoff because he'd be doing work around updates to our roadway system, updates to our bicycle and pedestrian facility sidewalks, et cetera. We would also be getting from the consultant in concert with Big Sky, the overall community engagement plan. So how do they plan to bring early continuous involvement throughout the project to us and what are the tools that they would suggest we use? And so when I get to frameworks, we'll get to see a little bit more in depth of what, what kinds of tools that would be potentially included in that, so they'll include things like, you know, website and sending, sending out requests to media outlets to do articles, et cetera. They've all agreed to do a branding style for communication, so when somebody sees material related to the comp plan, whether it's the, you know, the beginning kickoff or it's a visual preference survey or it's the draft, it'll have colors and themes that will help the public recognize it's the same project. So this is important with regards to projects, we're not, it doesn't appear different all the way through the process. The public can see the identity of this project and they'll be able to relate to it and, and recognize it very quickly. They are proposing to do some stakeholder interviews, so focus groups, so we'll be talking a bit more about who would be within that, so that, you know, you know, citizens and businesses and nonprofits. And, you know, a whole gamut of people potentially for that as well as what will eventually be the big visioning opportunity. We did ask in the RFP for them to, to propose COVID compliant methods because we are not assured that we're gonna be able to have gatherings of very many people because of, you know, the restrictions of, of social distance spacing and masks, et cetera. So we'll be working a little bit about, more about how to maximize that opportunity. And in addition to that, our RFP specifically asked for these groups to work on methods that would get to people we don't normally hear from, people who, who may be limited on their technology or have limited access to information so that we're, we're getting a great cross-section of the community throughout the process. It will include also an open house later. After, so there's been some materials built for this project, which will likely happen next spring. And we're also gonna try and do a visual preference. So as we get the visioning kicked off, we'll try and get more feedback from the public with images reflecting what they had identified early on of what, what our city should look like. And when it looks, you know, looks at various types of land use or we're looking at mobility, you know, like bicycle and, and walking or we're looking at economic development. So these are all components that the consultant has provided to us. They will come to, to meetings of the Plan Commission and to meetings of the City Council. So we want to time this with them doing presentations where we'll get the biggest benefit for you as the Plan Commission out of the project's development. That'll probably be, and I'm just kind of noodling a suggestion here, but probably after they get community engagement and start giving back to you, this is what they heard as part of the process. So possibly maybe after the visioning and then another opportunity after they start putting together a draft of the documents and probably preliminary drafts, you all can kind of see how all of these pieces have been put together. The plan element update, these are the mandatory pieces that we have to do for complan under a growth management act, which is that RCW 3670A. So land use, parks, housing, capital facilities, utilities, economic development and the integration of other elements is actually specifically the transportation element. So part of the land element, we are asking for them to consider some kind of small policy questions such as how would we look at maybe having neighborhood retail? So as you know, right now, nearly all of our retail is along US2. But all of our residential area is up in the northwest portion of the city. So doesn't make sense to potentially have some small pocket retail or commercial activities that make it possible for people to walk to services. So that's the idea that, that it's a walkable community. We've also asked them to take a look ironically at the area between basically the Department of Corrections and the Park Recreation Center. And what might happen there, because it's currently designated industrial and guess what? The Spokane County put it up for sale and the tribe is looking at buying it. They've made an offer on the property, so timing probably couldn't be better, I guess.
I think Airway Heights has a first option to buy there, right? If they wanted to.
Only on about thirty of the two-hundred-and-fifty acre.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I understand the cow's supposed offered five million for.
Just over five million for the property?
Yeah.
So I think the timing is great considering it's gonna go from public to private land and it's, it's not, of course, in any tribal trust designation at this point. So it'd be a great opportunity if the tribe's offer is accepted to engage the tribe in a conversation about what could happen in that area. We also have a parks master plan that's required to be updated by November of this year, so there's opportunities there with the park plan. So, you know, how do we integrate policy into our comprehensive plan about future parks? What, what is the standard for development in a park? Do we look at, you know, little pocket parks or activity parks? Or in other ways, we look at this, should we think about policy that would include facilities for the disabled and for senior in our parks facility? So these are opportunities we can, we can go through the process with, with Parks Department and our consultant. Housing element, there's been a lot of chatter and some new requirements at the state level about what a housing element has to have and that's looking at a full gamut of housing need. And that goes all the way to looking at those without housing presently. So we have some work to do there. Capital facilities would be updating based on what's happening with our water master plan update, which was due to be updated anyway. So this is gonna give us a lot of information about what's happening with the water system and our capacity. As well as the fire, police and courts are going through an analysis to look at what the needs that they will have and that is supposed to feed into this capital facilities element. So as a matter of fact, that response to their P is due tomorrow, so we'll see which firms responded to do that work. So what is the needs now for those three departments? What is the future growth impact and what are the options to help them? And this was a direct outcome of the Plan Commission bringing this issue forward to the City Council during last, one of their, one of your last joint workshops with the City Council about the impacts of growth on these public safety services. Of course, the integration with other elements is actually the transportation chapter and in that case, certainly taking a look at updated potential land use and how that's impacting transportation. But one of the biggest goals I think we should look toward is to actually flesh out and build a twenty-year plan for sidewalks and developing our bicycle plan and our pedestrian plan. So where are we gonna have, you know, a designated bike route? You know, what are we gonna do for wayfinding? How are we going to look at where people need crossings in order to get to other parts of our community? So that would be all included in the transportation update and of course, they'll be providing us with GIS-based maps, that's geographic information systems. So that's what, part of what Zach works on so that we have the data and we're able to maintain those maps and, and make changes to them in the future. Any questions about the update to the plan thus far?
Heather, this kind of works out really good because just last night, I, I was in, I'm on the board for 350 Spokane Climate Change and we went over the Spokane Sustainability Action Plan and it's in draft form. And it would be really nice that if somehow Airway Heights can somewhat mirror this. It includes everything that we just discussed on task three. And we broke out into groups last night and we even brought up, you know, other things like, you know, saving the bees and all the, along Highway Two and all the main highways, Washdod is still spraying herbicides, dangerous chemicals that are killing off even our hummingbirds, all, all of our pollinators. And we are having, there's a study that's included in this showing that our summers are gonna get hotter and drier. And drier. So we're going to have more fires. And the spring and the fall are going to be more rainier with less snow in the winter times. So. We're going to have mass drought. And heating up of the earth. And they were saying by twenty twenty five to twenty thirty, a hundred and eleven to a hundred and twenty degree temperatures is what we're looking at. And so. Our farming, our farmlands and 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 we have farmlands all around us, you know, once we pass Airway Heights, you know, going towards the Cava Reservation. And we drastically, e- even even our own yards out here, All American Yards are still using Roundup. You know, everyone's trying to have that perfect green yard. And all these chemicals that are constantly being put into our soils are contaminating our water sources. And we identified that last night as, okay, this is not even written in the Spokane Sustainable Action Plan. And so we're going to be making extensive comments on this. And it would be really nice if uh. The consultants on this, we need to add this or mirror this to Spokane. And I just seen an article the other day that. M- most American cities are not ready or adaptable or have any kind of plans for climate change. A- and and we need to make some drastic changes here. And. And and I brought up the fact, you know. I work at Eastern Washington University under Sir Cal and doing research for seventy one Western tribes, and I'm bringing up this methodology of the medicine wheel. And the fact that what this is doing, i- i- it needs to do, it's going to show um people, it doesn't matter what race you are, but. We need to change the way as humans are thinking. In order to be able to combat climate change. And Spokane is trying really, really hard, but they're missing a lot of elements, right? And and so I would like to forward the Spokane Sustainable Action Plan to all of you. And you could forward it on to the consultants. Um, and we need to include this in our, in our tasks, in our elements. Um.
Well, um, I think that's really a great idea. What I would, uh, what I would. Suggest is I think there's definitely room for policy within. Um, the chapters that are there to discuss strategies for uh resiliency, you know, environmental sustainability. And, you know, practices. And I would um. Say that, you know, everything from what you've just talked about, you know, wildfire wildfire risk, you know, that. Could be, you know, translated to, well, you know, land use policy, for example. Um, or, you know, in the capital facilities, uh, you know, element, having a policy about how the city of Airway Heights. Um, it, you know, maintains their property. Um, those would be all really great opportunities to insert that type of policy. And for the Plan Commission members that uh may not be fulfill familiar with this, um. There has been a a lot of conversation at the state level about requiring local jurisdictions to do. Environmental action plans. Uh, it hasn't come to a point of requiring it yet. But it is making its way into various pieces of legislation and there are a lot of communities. That have opted to do that. Big cities, uh, for example, in um San Francisco, um, have all done that because they realize that with. Climate change that, you know. Um, water levels are rising and and that. Likely move billions of dollars worth of infrastructure from, you know, water lines to roadway network. Um, because they're they're facing these these types of changes. Uh, so I think there there is certainly room to for for feedback and putting policy into this document. And then um. What Spokane did was they they actually created a separate sustainability initiative outside the comprehensive plan. Um, and that may be something to have further for the dialogue with the Plan Commission and City Council about as well, Angelina.
Yes. Yeah. And even just last summer, you know, we had fires. Right when you're entering into every heights up highway two, you know, i- i- it came really close to households. And even the Air Force Base Fairchild, they sent up planes, fire got really close to even the base. I mean, that was just last summer. And we have very dry, dry conditions. And I drove home to the ri- to the cover reservation this. This last weekend and I am, I have contacted their DOT department and we're 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 um. Trying to do some research and um preventative cost analysis, cost analysis, our research work for them now. And they are extremely dry. And there's just no rain. We do not have the rain that we newly do in April. And we are looking at some serious fires this year. And when all the. The and 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 the next fall and spring when we have um massive rain. All them trees are going to be carried and buckled under bridges and we're, well, at least on reservations, we lose bridges, we lose um transportation and transit. Assets and i- i- it affects. Not on the only economic development, but people can lose their lives over this, you know, and and this is happening all around us. It's not on the news. The surrounding tribes issues do not go in the news. And we have two tribes that have trust land here in Airway Heights. And even for every height sake. Yes, we do need to be looking at climate change adaptation plans and. And we need to be ahead of the game here. You know, maybe we set precedence for the rest of the country. And we start inserting this into our comprehensive plan. And 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 have our um consultants really look at this.
Absolutely. Well, please.
I'm sorry, I've got a question. Wh- where can, where can we go as a commission? To read about all this stuff? Is there a particular website we should be directed to?
I would love to invite you all to come to the next Spokane. Three fifty climate change meeting. Um, and and we can keep you up abreast on everything that even Spokane, the city of Spokane is doing. Um.
And I. Website or something, Angelina, that we can go.
Yes, you can go to three fifty dot org.
Three fifty dot org.
Yes, and that's, we have a national level, we have a state level, and then we have the city levels.
Okay. Thank you.
I will put together some resources, uh, Mr. Brennerker, to look at, including maybe um. The link to where some of the draft bills are with regards to uh climate resiliency. And he'll talk a little bit more in detail. About what that is and what the expectations are um for a community.
By the way, it's Hank, Heather.
Okay.
But no, I'd appreciate that. I'd like to learn a little bit more about what exactly Spokane's doing.
Okay. Um, so I'll just uh conclude then with on this part that um. We are expecting to have a draft of the document available by December. Uh, so we'll probably have that workshop with the Plan Commission toward the end of the year and that they would be. Uh, continuing to take feedback for the document all the way through the um. The adoption through written comments on the draft, for example, or the public hearing for the Plan Commission and the public hearing for the City Council. And producing a final document and and providing to us all of the GIS data and the maps that go along with that process. So um. Any questions with regards to this portion of it before I move over Big Sky real quick to go through through their scope?
Just a suggestion, uh, you know, when we come in December and this data has been presented. Maybe uh we could do like a, not a regular meeting, but just a workshop, because it might take a little bit longer. And I I don't want everybody to kind of get bogged down to it and takes hours. So maybe if possible. We could do this uh maybe a week before. So if anything comes up. At the meeting level, we don't delay for another month, you know, that's that way, if there's any questions, it could be answered prior to the meeting. If it's possible.
That's a really good idea. And it can be a difficult time to get everybody together because of the holidays, as as you may remember, Cal, with. The holidays in um both November and December and, you know, people are.
We, everybody's had a holiday for a year now.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's probably, probably a a great strategy. Um, we'll bring that up at the kickoff meeting uh with regards to having an early workshop. I'm just pulling up the. A proposal for Big Sky. I'm sorry, sometimes I can't necessarily do three things at once, but. Um, this proposal, as I mentioned, gets into a little bit more about what they're. Going to provide as far as resources. So as I mentioned, they're going to be developing the community engagement strategy throughout the process. So. Kickoff through the various uh pieces of development and of course all the way at the end. And they'll be leading the visioning process uh for the community. So that's the chance for people. Uh, to talk about, you know, the the desires to have a sustainability plan, uh, the desire to uh. Have more emphasis on economic development or to look at focus areas. With regards to growth. So um just in more detail, they are going to be doing um. The website for us, uh, all the information leading people to that website. Uh, they will be doing these uh PAI, which is, you know, direct outreach. For uh community members with regards to the the project. The online survey, they're going to be doing a town hall, two of them. So one one at the beginning, one partway through the process. Uh, with regards to the draft. Uh, they're going to be doing several community connect events. Those are things that we'll have to plan out and where they're going to be. And of course, we're going to be guided by um the governor's. Policy about uh COVID nineteen and and what we are going to be required to do. And they're also going to be uh working with the press and providing press releases to help continue to. You know, promote the plan uh throughout the process. So. That is, it's just in summary what our project is. Are there any questions before we we close this out and? And uh, just let you know that we'll be um bringing the the next design event, which would be the visioning. Uh, process to you um for some input and then uh the getting that off the ground this year. Uh, early, probably this spring to get the process kicked off.
I don't have any questions. I think it's it's great work. Good milestone.
I'll second Cal's opinion.
Thank you. Well, we will be checking in every month with you about the progress of the plan, you know, showing new materials we're working on, what's happened. Uh, with the plan, inviting you to participate in the events. And so um this will be a very active. Year for all of you as commission members. We really want you to to become involved. And uh, you know, that's. The whole goal of having a citizen commission such as yourself is that you're bringing that in a citizen perspective. What should we be looking at and considering? And how should we? Be developing policy to move forward uh as a city. Oh, so with that, I will uh conclude that topic and I can move on to something a bit more fun. For everybody, uh, which is the uh.
Public.
Plan. So uh, some of the Plan Commission members participated. Back in nineteen twenty nineteen on the development of the Public Art Plan for Airway Heights. So. That would probably be Mark and Cal would be the only two that were originally here. If I am correct about that. Yep, okay. Uh, so the city. Uh, just as a little bit of background, the city of Airway Heights has not had a policy with regards to public art. Um, they've had a resolution about how they would use money in the past for public art, but this all really came to a head. Back in, as I understand, in about twenty eighteen, when the traffic circle was being built for. The entryway to the Spokane Tribe on US two and then kind of became echoed again. When the traffic circle was being built at the other end of town over at Deer Heights. Uh, and there was some discussion about what those traffic circles were going to look like. I believe the Spokane Tribe was proposing um to put a a piece um in the center of the one uh next to their entrance. And there was a realization that there was really no policy guiding um how public art happens. So. The city engaged in a a project, SCJ Alliance was the consultant and Alicia Ayers. Uh, particularly with that firm led the community through a process to create a public art plan. And that public art. Uh, identified that public art could take a lot of forms, everything from physical to live performances, that it could be a medium. That um is temporary or permanent. And identified that there were some instruments that the city needed to adopt in order to make the art plan a reality. And this ordinance is is that implementation tool. This ordinance. That we're workshopping tonight and proposing to go to public caring next month with the Plan Commission will create. Uh, two chapters in our municipal code. One would create a public art commission. There would be a commission of volunteers, similar to yourselves, that would be appointed uh by the mayor after recommendation of the council. They would be an advisory body to the city on public art. Uh, they also would be able um to to be uh specifically responsible for reviewing uh proposals. Helping to select the art pieces and assist the city in in identifying. You know, everything from theme to the final piece that would be selected. The second ordinance that this uh would create would be. The formal funding mechanism for an art program. And. Like many, many communities, this uses the principle of setting aside one percent. Of the of the expenses on a capital project. Now, capital project, I think, defined at Airway Heights is, I think it's over sixty thousand dollars, but I can double check that. But one percent would be required to be set aside, to be put into a fund. And that would be reserved for the use as public art. So it's a public project paying for public art. This ordinance does not require private development to do art, nor is it collecting money from private development. So the uh ordinance does allow for the fund to receive other money, though, to be also used for the development of public art. So. If the city applied for and received a grant. Or there was a uh donation by a corporation or an individual. That was to go toward public art. This fund can be used to receive those dollars and it reserves those dollars exclusively for public art. And that is, that is the goal typically of a public art fund. Um, there are some sections here in the ordinance with regards to. The commission itself, the makeup of the co- the commission, uh, the criteria that they use for projects and um. How a project goes out for for proposals, solicitation basically from artists. Um, selection, there's a lot of language in here about um installation, who actually owns the piece, the requirement to maintain the piece. And how a a piece is deascensioned or decommissioned, which does happen. Does anybody remember? The um articles in the spokesman review about the, the like Beetlejuice style. Skeleton structure that that was in Riverfront Park and the decommissioning of it.
No.
Um, it was very, very controversial because I think the piece was so old and the artist um had passed away and the family was involved and the piece was structurally no longer sound. So that when uh Riverfront Park went to go do this, you know, six year, hundred million dollar renovation, um, that piece was going to be removed. And so. Um, there was a lot of discussion about what the Spokane policy was about decommissioning and this. So it's very important. Down the road, um, how the city would address a a piece that needed to be removed for for ready public purposes. So um that is the proposal in a nutshell. Um. Is there anything that the commission particularly has? Is there anything that the commission particularly has a question on? I'm just moving the document to. Membership, because I figured that would probably be one area that there may be. Questions or, or suggestions.
How hard is it going to be to get five members of our residents of Airway Heights to fill that, that spot, Heather?
Well, it, it is one at large citizen, a citizen with knowledge of real estate. A citizen of public art or education community fairs, two professional artists. They do not have to be residents.
You just scroll past it. I thought it said they all had to be residents. Yeah, that first line.
I think that that would be very difficult to have these five members be residents. I think that. Because of the specialization, for example, where the two, two of them are landscape, architecture, urban. Planning, interior designer, engineering. That might be difficult to get two people who are city residents. I'm not, I don't think it would be as difficult to get two artists that are residents. But then you, you're asking for, you know, other specializations. So I think you have a point, Mark.
Any reason why, why you put the residency requirement?
This was a draft that SCJ Alliance initiated together. So. The bones of it are from the consultant, but. These is certainly for workshops. So these are things that we can absolutely change. I think in a large community, it makes sense to have all residents. But we still are around ten thousand five hundred people.
Well, you know, Heather, if you're unable to fill from those disciplines that are itemized there from citizens. Or, you know, residents of Airway Heights, then at that juncture, maybe we want to change the language and no longer restrict them to. I mean, you never know, somebody might pop up, you know, that meets the qualifications. But if not. Then the, the requirements are too stringent. We can always kind of relax that and make it more open to others, you know. If we can't seem to fill the jobs, the positions.
Can you put the language saying that the first preference is to the residents of Airway Heights? And if we cannot find somebody to fulfill that one, then an outside person can be. Selected for that position. So still, Airway Heights still has the opportunity.
Otherwise, you don't have, you, you won't get to have this commission, right? Otherwise.
You would have the commission, the.
But I won't be here.
Not with the five members if you can't get the qualifying candidates for it.
So the, the way that it would work is. You need, certainly you would want to have a goal of meeting all of your qualifications and they're very, you know, very clear. And if you can't, you know, seat the commission for the first time, because you can't fill all the roles. Then that would be an opportunity is, as Hank indicated, to come back and amend the ordinance. I would also say that. You know, you could put language in here as Cal suggested saying. In this section up above that. The preferences for residents. To fill these positions. And so, you know, you give, you give some stress. On resident versus non-resident to the council and to the mayor as they're making appointments. But I think it's, I think it's cleaner to say what your minimum requirement is. So is it, is it a professional affiliation? Or is it residency?
In my opinion, just knowing how difficult it's been over the years to have a full planning commission. I don't see how this commission is going to be filled from the residents of Airway Heights.
Yeah, I think that might be a challenge. You might get fifty percent of the people, then what do you do with the other fifty percent?
Well, the plant commission, as we've all heard repeatedly for the last couple of months. It does have a minimum requirement for certain positions to be residents and other, and other positions are not required to be residents. So you could use that as a template here and say, of these five. You know, which three, because that, in the case of the plant commission, a minimum of three people have to be residents and four do not.
B and C residents of Airway A can be non-residents. Because I, I, I don't know how difficult, like you made that comment earlier, finding a licensed architect or. Urban planning or just any of those positions out of Airway Heights, let alone them having the time to come do the commission as well.
Well, I think I have difficulty finding the two professional artists. I mean, if the goal is to have something sculptural. You know, versus just a, a mural or something like that. Like that's a very specific skill set and I don't know that. There's many residents in Airway Heights.
Hey, Mark, me and you qualify for this, to be honest with you.
So I was just going to say, I do have a regional planning master's degree in this and I am an artist. And I have a small business in, and I'm called Creative Native on my artist side. So I don't know if I could fill this position being a commissioner already, but I'd be willing. And I live in the city of Airway Heights.
That would be something we would, we would have to ask a question about, I guess, of Stanley Schwartz. Because there is some other language that was recently reviewed that affected art. But that may have been specific to the city council and the commission being on more than one body. But we could, we could look into that, Angelina, and find out. In yours, as an artist, do you think that it would be. Difficult to find two artists that were residents to be on a, an art commission within Airway Heights?
You know, unless we even reached out to the tribes. Now, the cow spells and the Spokanes, we have tremendous amount of artists. And can contribute a lot of native art, like even to Highway Two, the roundabouts. You know, Spokane Tribe and Cal Spells could contribute a great deal. To even those projects and sort of the area. I mean, if you just walk into the casinos, they have a lot of beautiful artwork. I do native fashion shows and I paint, draw jewelry, you name it. I've been doing art since I was a kid.
What would be the chances that two of them would be residents of Airway Heights? And would be willing to sit on this commission, I think is overall what we're trying to figure out.
Okay, well, the cow spells, since their reservation is only eleven miles. They have, I even assisted them in turning in two hundred and forty-two acres out here into trust land. And even with the recent bid for five million to buy the raceway park. And I have spoken to. A current councilman, they mainly want to turn that into housing. And so a lot of the tribal members are artists. And if we reached out to the tribes, I am sure they'd be willing to be part of this.
Making a case to not have the artists as a resident. Because if tribal members are living on either the reservation site. So their members and they're not living on the reservation, but not in the city, they would not be.
Many of them are living out here in Airway Heights. Just the cow spells employ three thousand employees alone. A lot of the members are living out here and going to college and working at the casinos. I, I, I think, you know, if we opened it up to that, we could get the other artists involved.
Can you define, can you clarify, opened it up? So are you suggesting to keep it to a residency, a residency requirement or not for the professional artists?
I would kind of like to keep it as a resident requirement, but if we could not fill that position, then open it up.
I guess, based on the conversation, we should have an exit plan, just in case we don't find somebody.
Yes.
Okay, so just to, to summarize the conversation. It sounds like there may be some, some concerns about. The commission members having residency. But there's a desire to see if we could get residents to fill these slots first. And potentially add some language to the ordinance that allows for, for the selection of, by the mayor of a non-resident. If a qualified resident is not found.
At least in Spokane County. And I know several. Very successful artists that could contribute to Airway Heights very greatly. They're very talented. And their works are national.
Nice.
Great.
Hey, Heather. I, is it even possible, but to me, this would be a perfect opportunity to have a youth also sit on the commission if they could.
Absolutely. You can put a, a youth role on a, on a commission.
I think that this one right here would be a good spot for that, just, just thinking about kids wanting to participate in art.
Yes, very good idea.
All right, just making some notes here. Okay. I'm going to flip you all on the other side of my screen. If I can drive, uh, let me not make anybody carsick. Let's see, there's terms. Is everybody comfortable with the terms for years? Typical commission has a chair and a vice chair elected within the organization. They can establish regular meetings, but they do need to meet on a somewhat regular basis. And have notice available at least a week prior. This is pretty standard for commissions.
Would the, let's say you have the two artists and. The, the third one, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on what the title was. But let's say you have these three individuals that are all, that the knowledge in this field of public art. All three of these people are at an event together outside of this commission. Are they going to be breaking the law being together?
Uh, so let me give you an example. If. Everybody attended, intended an event, let's say there's an outdoor concert at Sunset Park. They're not violating open public meetings. They all show up at the same. Events and they're, they're participating as, as individual citizens. They are not violating open public meetings. It's when they are getting together. For purpose of discussing any kind of policy or. Ordinance, then, then that intent needs to be notified to the public through a special meeting notice. So for example, Angelina's offer for you to go to a meeting. With the three fifty organization, if that was an open public meeting and you just sat in the audience and you listened. That would not require a special meeting notice, but to engage you or ask your opinion. As a plant commission member, we're engaged in a discussion about what you may or may not be forwarding as a commission. That would have required a special meeting notice. So just keep in mind, the, the goal is that, that as a commission, that you're not conducting business. In any way without providing an opportunity for the public to participate. So that's why things like. You know, you're not, you're not allowed to vote via email, you know, we're not able to throw. A, a proposal and have you privately vote on that with email. Or, or Mark can't say, hey, I think we should do this. And you know, the other. The other members say, you know, yes or no, based on my opinion. And you basically take action as a result of that.
So I think, and I, I don't even know if this is something that should go in there or not, but just maybe thinking about. Having this small group of individuals that probably are going to interact with each other outside of that commission. How they're looking at interacting outside that commission.
Well, every, as you, as you may recall, Mark, we asked that every commission member participate in the. Open public meetings training provided by the Secretary of State. And I was, that was something we're going to do under the staff presentation. Everybody to watch your video and fill out your certificate and turn it in. So yeah, we would be asking this commission as well to do the open public meetings training. Fill out the certificate and turn it in. And I should, should have mentioned this, that the request from the administration. Is that the planning department would staff this commission.
I guess it would be no difference than this commission.
Yes, yes. And the difference probably is, well, you're dealing more with policy and ordinances. This commission will be dealing with basically making recommendations of awards of funding. For projects based on adherence to a proposal that's, you know, put out to public. And how closely the, the, you know, the respondent artists adhere to the process. And, and then a project is selected and that, that project. Recommendation goes to the council for the award of funding and a contract to construct. So. Little bit different maybe. But it, it's covered under the same kind of topics that the open public meeting training would, would address for a commission member.
Sorry, I made you go backwards.
No, no, this, those are great questions, especially since. We have two new members on the commission. And so these, these examples. Help in, you know, certainly if, if someone wants to move over to another commission or more. Just don't leave us without a core on this. Yeah, great questions. Let's see, there, there's probably not too much about the installation and maintenance in detail. But the. The process for, you know, deciding, you know, there's some recommendations here about the criteria. And these are probably not as tight as you might want to expect in, let's say, a public works project. But this is art and, and so just kind of going through these criteria might be helpful. But the artistic merit, the artist's history. Inherent quality of the timelessness and vision of the proposed piece. The intent of the artist, of the meaning of the proposed or desired effect. The local significance and site specificity. Representation of styles and tastes in the collection. So that, in other words, the, you know, freedom to choose pieces that don't conform to a single. Style or type, that there could be a breadth and depth to the art that, that is selected. Unrestricted public viewing. So this is important. This is public funds used for public arts to be placed in a public location. Safety and durability. Remember, we talked about the Beetlejuice skeleton structure. It, it was up for quite a while, but eventually it did sustain damage to it and was no longer structurally sound. The practicality of fabrication and installation and compatibility. So compatibility might be something you want to consider on a traffic circle, for example, if someone is an artist is proposing. Basically, a reader board with constantly changing and flashing message. You know, there are already some laws that limit those types of facilities if it would be a visual distraction to drivers. And so, you know, the commission may not think that, you know, a flashing, changing message in the middle of a traffic circle. Is the best piece of art to put in that location, set the most compatible versus maybe a static. Piece of art at that location. That would give you an example of compatibility. Any thoughts on the criteria?
No. That looks pretty laid out.
Well, there are a lot of communities that have our ordinances and I think yes, Jake kind of scoured quite a few communities to find, you know, best examples of the art ordinance, so this is what we would propose to take to hearing next month. I can add the position in there for a youth as well as a backup provision with regards to preference for residents but non-residents, but requires Spokane County residency as a requirement uh, to the draft that moves forward. Are there any other recommendations or changes to the draft before we take it to hearing?
No.
No.
Anybody else? I guess we're okay with that.
Can we make a motion to pass this off to the to the city council with those changes, Heather, or do you need to make those changes and come back to it?
Uh, if you feel comfortable making a motion with those changes and move it forward to hearing, that would be great.
I'm okay with that, I think it shouldn't be, I, you understand the language requirement, so if you can make those changes and if the commissioners feel good, I guess we can move the motion.
I feel good as well.
I think Mark made the motion, is there? How, did we have a second?
Who's gonna second that, Hank?
Sure, I'll second it.
All right, thank you.
You're so convincing, Cal.
Hey, I got a few bodies, somebody's gotta work. Mark's always making the motions, which is great.
Mark's good at it.
I I was trying to do it, but I was told I can't do that.
I just like moving along.
Oh, that's good, it's it's progressive, man, that's great.
Uh, so as, um, did we, did we get a vote from the commission to move it forward?
Yeah, all in favor for ordinance, uh, C nine six three, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have everybody in favor.
Thank you. And just as a note, I'm gonna try and and do these more as ordinances in the future, because I think they're easier to read for for you all in the public than kind of draft, you know, concepts. Uh, we have to do an ordinance at the end of the process for the council anyway, so hopefully that will be an improvement in our process for for you all. And that concludes the two items that I were going to present and get feedback on tonight, and I'll hand this back over to the chair.
Thank you, Heather, for the presentation and I think the next one is Smart Growth America grant from Zach.
Yeah, I could have a break here.
I have my tea.
Give me just a second, I'm getting my screens right before I pull this up. All right, so I I touched on this um, in staff reports last month, but I wanted to give you a more comprehensive rundown of what we're working on with Smart Growth America, so uh, pre-COVID, Airway Heights was chosen by the National Complete Streets Coalition, which is a program of Smart Growth America to participate in a series of workshops to support its work to create safer, healthier streets, along with the National Complete Streets Coalition. This grant was also sponsored by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Transportation Improvement Board, as well as the Washington State Department of Transportation and the Washington State Department of Health. So over the past year, with a significant break in there in the middle kind of due to COVID, uh, our team has been participating in a series of workshops designated to pilot new approaches to implementing activity-friendly routes to everyday destinations, which make it safe and convenient for people of all abilities to walk, run, bike, skate, or roll to reach homes, jobs, shops, schools, and more. Uh, a major part of this grant involves the selection of a site within the city that could benefit from a pop-up traffic calming project. So um, most of this presentation is gonna kind of go over the site that we've chosen. Um, I'm gonna kind of give you a tour of the area and then kind of give you an overview of our engagement plan and process moving forward. And if you have questions, shoot, feel free and stop me, so.
Zach, have you mentioned before who's on our our committee?
Um, I haven't, I don't think I have it on this slide in particular, so the committee is made up of a selection of local sorry, so the the team is made of a selection of local agencies, so myself and Heather represent the city of Airway Heights. Jamie Hayes is representing Spokane County, Jason Lane is representing the Spokane Regional Transportation Council. Charlene Kay and Greg Fig are from WashDOT, Tara Lamone is from STA, Rochelle Bradley's from the Spokane Tribunians, and Seth Jones is from the Cowesville Tribune. So there are representatives from multiple agencies or stakeholders in the group that are that are participating on that level of this, and we'll we'll go into that here in a second.
Let me just give a little bit of background, um, when we received the grant, we were encouraged by Smart Growth America to bring in stakeholders because there was no pre-selected project and since we share jurisdictional boundaries with all of these agencies, um, we invited them all to participate in the training, uh, because their groups would benefit from the training about how to do these types of safety projects for for rolling as well as walking, but um, there was always possibility that the project ultimately that was recommended could cross jurisdictional boundaries and be in an area that impacts one of these agencies or overlap with it, so that's why we have all of this group and our team to help us through this process.
And we were, we also had a member from the Spokane Regional Health District, but unfortunately with COVID, she was no longer able to participate, so um, we are going to engage them on a stakeholder level, but unfortunately, yeah, we we lost our our member there, so. Um, so again, getting back to the site selection, so our goals for our site selection were to provide simple, safe, accessible, multi-mobile transportation opportunities for the Airway Heights community. Identify a site that is not slated for transportation improvements in the near future, so there are a handful of transportation plans, both at the city level and beyond. Um, we wanted to make sure we found a site that was not slated for a future improvement, just because we figured it was an opportunity to uh, to look at an area that's not currently being looked at and locate a site where improvements will impact a large portion of the Airway Heights community. So that was kind of a question of equity, we wanted to make sure we were finding somewhere that is um, a place where a lot of people, not just a certain group of uh, people in Airway Heights use it, so we we kept that in mind when we were selecting our site. So our site location is along King Street, uh, south of Sixth Avenue and north of Highway Two. Site is located within the western border of both Sunset Elementary and Sunset Park. So there are are two streets there, one on the east, one on the west, Lawson is on the east side of the park and King, which is where we're looking, is on the west side of the park. Um, if you guys know the area, Lawson is is pretty, um, well, I don't want to say fortified, but the the street is, um, has a lot of features on it, while King Street is uh, missing a lot of features. We wanted to make sure we were picking a north-south street, the majority of the current plans involve east-west streets, so a lot of the north-south look like they could uh, could need some help there. And again, this is uh, located within an area that for a number of reasons, um, many groups within Airway Heights use this area. So it was something that we saw that, okay, well, a lot of people use this, that'd be great. Um, it's also located along one of the major pedestrian routes connecting to the northern residential area to Yokes and the STA bus stops. Uh, this was important, especially when we were looking at COVID. You would see a lot of people walking this back and forth, and just because the road, King kind of leads right to Yokes there, and there's a the STA bus stop right next to Yokes that people were using this for, so it it appeared that the site was a pedestrian route. It was not slated for improvement and it could use some uh, some enhancements. So again, just kind of going over some of the stuff I just said there, so there are no plans for improvements. The site is actually identified within the Sunset Elementary Safe Routes to School Plan. So Sunset Elementary and the school district have already established this as a safe route for kids to walk, even though after looking at the site, there there are some pedestrian improvements that can be improved, so. Uh, limited funding opportunities for future improvements, again, it's it's not on any slate for any improvements at this time. Site serves the community as large, as well as vulnerable populations, vulnerable populations in this context, meeting children there that are walking to Sunset Elementary. Site also provides access to the community grocery store as we just talked about. So this is an aerial here of our site. We do have four particular areas kind of marked here that we're gonna go through one by one, so the first one being kind of that intersection of uh, of Highway Two and King Street, between that and Thirteenth Avenue. The second being the intersection of Tenth Avenue and King Street. The third being the intersection of Eighth and King Street, and the fourth being the intersection of Sixth and King Street, so I'm gonna gonna walk you through all of these. Um, our goals, while looking at this area, were continuous north-south pedestrian connectivity. Uh, one thing you notice when you kind of walk this and look at the area is the uh, the availability of sidewalks essentially. Some are really good, some are really bad, but they are not consistent at all, so that that's something we were looking at. Improve crossing access at King Street, Tenth Avenue for connectivity to Park and School, and we'll go that over that in depth a little bit. Improve real and perceived safety, uh, potential, uh, attract people walking and biking on King Street from Sixth Avenue and increase active travel in the area after the project. So this is our our first location there, so that uh, the King Street between Highway Two and Thirteenth Avenue. So this is the newer one, so this is right next to the Arrow Leaf Hotel there. So you can kind of see there is a sidewalk on the right-hand side of King Street there, uh, but between Highway Two and the alley there, there is just a parking lot and to the north of Thirteenth Street and on, there is no pedestrian infrastructure. This is that same area, this is looking south toward Highway Two, this is actually a a fairly old picture, um, on the left side there, that is where Autumn Leaf is now located, but on this picture, kind of what we wanted you to see is that there are no painted pedestrian crossings, there's no protected crossing at all. Um, and this street is actually fairly wide for this type of street, it's believe forty feet wide, so there is some extra space there for, um, you can kind of see where those leaves are on the left side of your screen, there's some space that we're looking at for doing some protected, pretend pedestrian infrastructure. This is that same area, but just a little further down, so there is an alley to the south of Autumn Leaf, so that just kind of shows you again that uh, that area between Highway Two and this uh, this initial alley, there's there's not a whole lot of safe pedestrian infrastructure. So this is the second location, this is uh, King Street and and Tenth Avenue. So one thing we wanted to point out here is the difference in the width of the street, so that forty foot width is is pretty big for this type of street, but as it opens up, once you kind of hit past the uh, the school, it opens up to sixty-six, so there's a lot.
Zach, that's, but those are parking spots there, all the way up that that road, though, nobody treats that as a road.
Sure, sure, um, and and that's, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit here in a second. But um, but yes, the the parking at um, at Sunset Park is kind of interesting because it has this kind of bump out and it goes around the entire park, it's almost like teeth. These kind of, the way they do this, so we're, we haven't really made any decisions on doing anything at all, but this area in particular, we're looking at for maybe doing some sort of a a parking rearrangement, just because there's so much space and the parking is never full. So in particular, that area, right?
I'm gonna disagree with you on that, though.
Okay.
I, because, I mean, there was plenty of times to go to that park, especially Saturday mornings. Maybe in the afternoons when you're doing practices and stuff, you can't get a spot on either side of the park.
Okay. Well, and this is why we're we're reaching out to you guys to get comments on this, so we we don't have any anything in stone at all for actually what we're doing yet, but this came up in one of our our discussions, and initially we're for using some of this area for kind of when we launched the project to set out some tents and talk to people and stuff like that, but I mean, if this is something that's constantly full, then that's something we can rearrange. We've also talked about, you know, instead of having straight pull-ins, we could do parallel parking, which would free up a little room, other additional things, so nothing is set in stone yet, but that is that is a good comment to know, so. Um, what else did I want to cover here? So one of the big things we were looking at here is enhance connectivity between Sunset Park and the current pedestrian infrastructure, so you can see the uh, the sidewalk there kind of hangs to the right and then just stops. And then the access to Sunset Park that is a little further down, so right now it's kind of awkward if you're walking it because you're on a sidewalk, you it's fine, you're going, going, then it just kind of stops, and then you're in this weird kind of gravel between where the asphalt stops and the grass starts until you get to that connectivity piece down there, so that's something we're looking to enhance using this project. This is that same area, but looking south. Again, it's just, i- it's kind of awkward with that transition there, unfortunately, you can't really see it because of the cars, but that's where you're looking at there. So this is the third location, which is King and Eighth Street. Um, the big piece on here, again, this was identified within the Safe Streets Plan, but there there is no protected crosswalk or anything like that, that would be a simple, just putting a crosswalk down, you know, putting some paint on the concrete there, but that's something we would look at enhancing. There are sidewalks um, on both sides as you continue north to uh, to Sixth Avenue. So this is the last location, which is King and Sixth, again, this this um, idea of having a gateway opportunity for South King Street corridor, so finding a way to kind of make this area, you know, if we decide to can do this kind of continued, do it to you as pedestrian walkway, inviting people in to use that, as opposed to, you know, going on Lawson or something like that. So that's kind of what we're looking at there, and again, north-south pedestrian access. Also enhancing crossings on Sixth would probably wouldn't be a bad idea. So our engagement plan, you know, our stakeholders, we want to identify those early, so collaboration, again, most of these people we already talked about who are collaborating with the school district is one we didn't mention. We have reached out to the school district, Heather, we have we heard back from the school district at all yet? So not yet, so we'll we'll reach out to them again, but this is, um, they would be a really important partners, partners, since this project is located so close to where they're at. Residents and business owners, always, we want to make sure we're reaching out to them and they know what's going on. Informing residents and business owners, they're, you know, different tiers of residents and business owners, people that live really close to this project, we want to interact with a lot, you know, more intensely than others. Uh, the Parks Board, since this is, you know, adjacent to a park, we want to make sure we're interacting with the Parks Board there. Fire and police, we don't want to start putting stuff up without telling them, so they know what's going on. City Council, some planning commission, you know, we're starting right now, that's what we're doing. West Place Chamber of Commerce and Fairchild, also great partners. Those partners are also listed, kind of what we're looking at feedback-wise on the side there. So this is a, the first of our engagement plan, which again, we we list who we want to talk to um, in our engagement method, so this is kind of where we're at right now, which we're working on a a poster which we're gonna put up at Sunset Park, we have a little, um, almost like a, like an engagement board we can post in there. Uh, we're gonna post that at Yokes as well as the Rec Center with a link to a digital survey that we're finalizing right now. We, uh, Heather's working on an article for our Community Connect Newsletter that should be going out, I believe, next week. Is that accurate, Heather?
It'll go out this week.
This week, okay, so that'll, that's happening soon. Present.
I was just gonna mention, um, do you want to add a little bit at the end of this about what the survey is, because it's gonna be asking questions of the public about what are your concerns, safety, how do you use this area, et cetera?
Yeah, I was actually gonna gonna see if we could talk to the commission about potential questions here at the end, so. Yeah. Presentation planning commission, which we're doing right now. Having handouts to the houses along King Avenue, so there's about twenty houses, uh, give or take, um, along King Avenue there, we want to make sure that they know what's going on on King Street there, so, you know, again, no surprises. So we would want to interact with them on a kind of house-to-house basis, we're still working on like the logistics of that with COVID, especially with some of our partners, because we're not sure kind of what level they're allowed to do, so we're working on that. Virtual tool, Community Connect Newsletter and Digital Survey Challenges, again, just gathering materials, making, well, once we kind of get down what we want to do, make sure we have those materials to do it available. And again, this is a pop-up, so nothing permanent, um, we're looking at cones, you know, reflective tape, paint, stuff like that. Uh, so this will be our our second piece, which is the site design process, so this is kind of the next piece we're moving into next month, which is again, getting specific about what we actually want to do. Again, the who is going to be really similar. One of the pieces that I wanted to call out was the community Facebook group. I know a handful of you are active in the community Facebook group. If you guys aren't, it's a really, really cool tool the community has that, you know, has kind of evolved on its own. But there's a lot of interactivity with every all sorts of stuff going on in the community. So we really want to interact with them just because, you know, it seems like a great place to get feedback. For engagement methods, we're going to reach out to the Chief Free Press to do some coverage in there. Again, the self-guided presentation at Rec Center and also continuing the postings in Sunset Park. For our virtual tools, one of the things we want to do is something called a story map, which is a it's an interactive map, but it kind of tells a story as well. So very similar to our GIS site, but it's clickable, it has text, it has all sorts of other stuff. So that's something I'll be working on in the next, you know, couple of weeks here. Our challenge is, at this point, we just want to make sure we're engaging the community, making sure we can get as much feedback from the community involved as possible. So this is kind of the last step. So after we launch and we kind of look back, we want to make sure we're engaging residents, business owners, STA writers, community Facebook group. Again, our Tara, our partner with STA, you know, recommended using rider notices on the buses to let them know about it. Posting Tana to Yokes, Walmart City Hall, just, you know, maybe even that kickoff event, which I mentioned, you know, that area we were looking at initially. Social media campaign with cross posting to additional sites. So we spoke with Watch Dot about using Watch Dot's Facebook, as well as the city's Facebook and the community Facebook group, just making sure everybody knows what's going on. Our challenges are going to be data collection, which we're kind of having conversations with the county and Watch Dot to maybe borrow some some equipment to help with that and also community engagement. So yeah, that last piece I mentioned, but it's not on this slide here. But we're working on our survey questions. And right now, we have a handful of questions that we're kind of, nothing is set in stone. But is there anything in particular you guys would like to see on a digital survey? Kind of reaching out for this project, you know, that has to do with multimodal transportation or anything, you know, kind of that adjacent to that?
I think you should just ask those residents what's important to them. I think if you talk to a lot of the residents, that parking is pretty dang important on that side.
Sure.
Yeah, and then maybe the cow spells, they have their own transit system. And also the Spokane tribe, they have. It's called Moccasin. Moccasin something Transit. But they but both tribes have their own Facebook, reach out to the community, because a lot of the members are living out here in Everhite. They are working in these casino areas, and they are going to the colleges out here in Spokane and Sheenie area. So involving them and the councils would be really important, too.
Are you referring to the Moccasin Express?
Yes.
Okay.
Zach, do you know on the the west side of King, is there a sidewalk on that side? Or is it just on the east side?
Um, so let me get back to the east side. So it, let's see here, what part of King were you looking at, Mark?
I felt like I just heard Heather say there wasn't any on the west side, but I couldn't remember if between 12th and Eighth, if there was sidewalk on that west side or not.
No, there's not. So there is a sidewalk between 12th and 10th on the on the east side here.
And then it picks back up after Eighth, correct?
Yeah, it there's kind of a little nub here. And then it kind of picks back up and it goes from eighth to sixth. But it's all on the, yeah, I guess it's all on the the east side. So there is no sidewalk on the west side at all.
Okay.
Okay, well, I got I got the parking question and also the we can engage with the tribal groups for the Facebook and also with the councils. Is there anything else you guys would like me to look at?
Maybe try to maybe try to find the difference between, because there is a distinct group of people that go to the little park right there at the school. And they'll park in either that church parking lot or along King Street on the sidewalk. And then when that's too full, you're going back towards the baseball fields. So maybe see if we can differentiate those two separate areas and see which one people are more concerned about. Or maybe not concern is the right word, but how often they're interacting with either place.
Okay. So the difference between essentially the northern side, which is kind of Sunset Park proper, and then the the school infrastructure?
Yes, I believe that's correct. And that'll give us a lot of, I guess, inference on where people are parking and how they're getting to the park.
Any other comments or questions or anything before I I close this up?
No, I don't have anything. Anybody else?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, thanks, guys. We appreciate it. Like I said, this is early on in the process. So, you know, we'll take your your concerns and we'll definitely let everybody know. I believe we're meeting next week on that.
Zach, do you want to mention the project timeline?
Uh, yes. So right now, we are kind of towards the end of Phase one. Phase two is kind of going to run through, I believe, is it mid-June? And then we're going to kind of kick off mid-June to July. Heather, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, so the goal is to have a project, a pop-up project in the ground by June. So we're we're going through a process that's organized by Smart Growth America to work with with our team and some professionals from various federal agency, state agencies that are helping us understand the best way to do these kinds of pop-up projects to get a project location out, collect feedback from the community between now, let's say, the next month on what the perceived concerns are. Develop a couple of pop-up projects where actually they're required to be temporary, they can't be permanent, which we'll probably install in June. And then we have to report back by July to Smart Growth America about this. And that's what Zach was mentioning is we have to evaluate the project. And so during that that late May to June period, we'll probably be collecting data to see, very consistent with what Mark said, is what's going on? So how many people are walking to the park already versus once the pop-up project goes up, who are walking to the park? And that's where we are working on what those types of measurements would be. So now, all the way to June and then reporting back in July. So it's a very short timeline for the grants, you complete the implementation.
It's extremely short timeline.
Yeah, COVID really did a number on this project, so.
Yeah, this grant has morphed because we were we were awarded the grant at the end of nineteen and we kicked off the training with Smart Growth America basically in March of last year. And literally, we got back because we're doing it with two other cities, ones when Acheen, one's the city of Arlington. So we were all supposed to go tour the other cities. And there's what was a group, we help each other figure out, you know, what the problem is and then what the potential projects are. We it was shut down and it was it'd been shut down until January of this year. So we just started meeting again in March was our first resurrection meetings. So it's going very quickly. We're we're going to be start meeting twice a week, right?
I think so, yeah.
With this national coalition with our sister cities. So, yeah, it's going pretty quick. They want to get it done. And so if you haven't seen examples of what's called traffic calming, so the idea of using changes to the roadway to affect behavior. Just Google traffic calming, there's great temporary improvement project ideas that come up. They have different purposes, and this is the type of training that they're providing to us so that we can use these tools, each of us that are participating, whether it's Spokane, Keaney, or it's us, that we can start feeding these ideas into real projects that we'll be constructing in the future.
You done, Zach?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather and Zach, for the workshop presentation. I'm going to open up for commissioners, for if any commissioners have any reports.
What was the the last meeting? I can't remember if it was Heather or Zach made a comment about city council is going to be discussing in-person meetings again. Did anything come of that?
The meeting I was at, they essentially did a vote to have the city manager kind of investigate a the ways in which they could do hybrid meetings. But I have not heard any changes since then. So I believe kind of right now, we're at the we're looking into it phase, so.
And then is Kevin, by chance, on this one or no?
Kevin? What do you mean? I'm sorry.
Is Kevin Anderson on the Zoom meeting with us today or no?
Oh, oh, no, he's not here.
Do we know when, you know, recently, we had, I mean, Farland was shut down and then you had that traffic going over to, oh, I'm not thinking of the street number right now, but it's still dirt for part of the way. And it connects all the way from Hayford down to Lawson. But it's mostly dirt. Kevin's office is on it, the Public Works Office and stuff.
Twenty-first.
When are they planning on paving that road?
That is on the industrial plan that we adopted just in, what, December or January? You recall, Mark, the nine-phase, nine phases of the roadway infrastructure and utilities?
Okay.
So twenty-first going from he going from Hayford Road toward the, yeah, the the west is supposed to be the first phase of that. So like one of the goals of this planning cycle, the comp plan and and updating the capital program and the transportation plan is to integrate that plan for roadway improvements into our capital plan. So I just had a conversation with Mark Burgum, our city engineer, today, as a matter of fact. And the discussion was about for this year, six-year capital plan, bringing Twenty-first Avenue into the capital plan and starting to identify the phases and the funding and when it's going to be built.
So hopefully soon.
Well, I mean, we'll have a we'll have a plan of when we'll be able to do it. As far as pieces now, I want to make sure everybody knows that the city's not static. So it's it's not like that plan sitting on the shelf. So for example, as we have projects that come in, we have them sign agreements that they're going to participate financially in the development of Twenty-first Avenue, for example. So one of the conversations that we are probably going to have, and along with McFarland, is, you know, do we have enough agreements out there to make a project for certain portions of these roads and get and get some of these roads built sooner rather than later? And then on another level, Albert, the city manager, Albert Tripp, every year takes projects from these adopted plans and continuing to move them forward, takes them to the council and asks, you know, should we make these our legislative priorities when we go for when we go for funding requests of the legislature? So two or three projects out of the industrial plan was proposed this last session to the legislature with the support of the council for money for funding. So separate legislative set-asides above and beyond grants to build that. And what I could do is we can get you the 2021 legislative ask, a copy of that to you, to see what the roads were and the six-year capital plan.
That would be great, Heather. That road was pretty dang busy when McFarland was shut down.
Yeah, definitely, it's absolutely the goal of the city to get these roads paved. And that's where the industrial plan really helped like prioritize which road should go first. And so Twenty-first is identified as the spine. And so that's the first phase and then start building infrastructure off of that. So we are having conversations about how to move that forward into the capital plan and then, you know, how to ask for money in order to get that built. So I don't have a I don't have like a it's next year answer for you.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you. I just didn't know if we had any more information of when that was coming up.
Well, that's a good point. Didn't Kevin last year bring the six-year capital plan to you all to review before it took it to city council?
I believe so, but I don't.
I think he does, and I think that that's brought to council by June of each year. So it's coming up pretty soon. Probably have to ask Kevin about the timing, about bringing that forward to you for review. But I'm sure they did it, he did it last year. But I think this is great because it brings a lot more meaning when you look at that big church. What does it mean and how much money is being put aside for it?
Hopefully, coming out of COVID, things will get back to like somewhat of a normalcy. But I feel like so much has been lost over this past year keeping up what's happened. I miss the in-person, it just helps remind of what's going on.
Absolutely. And anytime that you want an update from the city on, you know, various topics, you know, Kevin on the six-year capital plan or the legislative priorities, which I mentioned, or, you know, with regards to the new needs assessment for police, fire and courts that Albert Tripp's working on. You know, we can certainly ask for that information to be brought to you so you can keep up. But there's stuff going on all the time. It's not static, for sure.
Thank you, Heather.
Yeah.
Where is the Amazon delivery coming on McFarland is at the center of the building, right? Is that the, I mean, I'm confused. There was there's currently a distribution center being built on McFarland. And then I read somewhere, an article about two weeks ago, that Amazon was about to put a distribution delivery service on McFarland. And I wasn't sure whether it was City of Area Heights or Spokane.
Well, the so a couple of weeks ago, Amazon publicly announced that they were that they were moving to the McFarland warehouse site. So it's the hundred and eighty-seven thousand square foot building that's under construction about the middle of McFarland there, south of Russell, I think, would be that is that the closest right away?
Exactly.
Yeah. So they are moving forward with that project and they're in review for the remainder of the site. But the main building had been permitted in there. They're working on that. That is a distribution facility versus the one that's over by the Geiger I-90 Interstate Off-Ramp, which is a is actually a shipping. So that's where they were they're receiving product and they're sorting it there.
Will traffic be a problem on McFarland with that going?
Pardon?
Wouldn't traffic be an issue on McFarland if Amazon uses that as a for their trucks to deliver locally?
Well, we're we're looking at the traffic impacts to McFarland by the Amazon distribution. And we've been exchanging information with the consultant for Amazon on the trips. And so we've not Amazon on the trips, and so we've not concluded the review of that. So we're very much looking at what the trips are, what the impacts are to other intersections, and then what the impact would be to Hayford and McFarland Road as well as um, you know, if there's any roadway uh modifications that would be needed. So that that's under review for sure, but the.
The road Mark was talking about will become important then.
Well, yeah, well, there has been a lot of projects in McFarland, so remember Zach showed you how to use our GIS tool now on the planning website to go into the building permit portal. And uh you'll see that that there um are active permits, a lot of active permits, which is great, which means that we're growing, we're, you know, bringing new business in to Airway Heights, and then you can um certainly look at an aerial photograph of that area and see the new buildings that are there. So yeah, it's it's definitely growing and getting more. So along there, there's exotic metals just completed their phase-two building. Um, the Mc- McFarland Warehouse um is currently under construction in that area. And then another one that's on the north side that hasn't been built yet, but it's been approved through a conditional use permit is the Columbia Cascade uh facility, which does uh chemical uh storage and kind of light manufacturing. So they're all concentrated in that that area.
Is the city, I I can't remember, Heather, just correct me. Thinking about that intersection up at Craig into how all that down there on McFarland is eventually gonna impact that and with no left turn out of there, how that's all gonna be impacted?
Yes, so that's a great um, that's a great question, another reason uh to get Kevin um in here to give an update. So the Spokane tribe, when they did their uh environmental impact statement, proposed to put a roundabout which is the same type of facility that's in front of their facility further to the west at Craig and US two. And so they ha- they have to build it because they're um expanding at the Spokane tribal facility. They are almost uh done with the design. I think they're at ninety-eight percent design. The next phase uh will be for the city to go through the process of acquiring the right of way needed for the roundabout. In my understanding is the Spokane tribe's goal is for that roundabout to begin construction next year, if if the right of way can be acquired. So it will allow for movement, that median that's across Craig at US two is only temporary as a right turn in or in a right turnout uh facility in order to mitigate in the interim conflicts that were occurring, basically accidents. But eventually um when that roundabout is completed, it will allow for full turning, obviously, around around that area. And then secondarily, if you remember from the industrial severary plan um and plans older than that, the goal has always been for Twenty-First Avenue, um not McFarland, but Twenty-First Avenue to go all the way to uh Craig Road and then beyond Craig Road and then tie back up into US two further to the west. The final landing location of that that tie-in back north to US two hasn't been finalized. But that's why Twenty-First Avenue has been designated as a type of arterial, and it will be built to an arterial standard in order to facilitate freight um and other, you know, vehicles, because it's it's proposed basically as the commercial industrial alternate route so that there won't be as much traffic on US two, so it's a capacity mitigation measure that Washington State Department of Transportation, Spokane County, the city of Airway Heights and the city of Spokane have all agreed to um to build that, and it will actually also go east of Hayford Road through what will what will be Twenty-First Avenue Airway Heights roadway and then become City of Spokane roadway and then tie back north into US two past um Hazelwood and and tie back in, so it becomes a complete bypass really for free in that area once built. And we'll, we can show you some drawings or ask Kevin to bring you drawings showing all that concept.
I know when I first came on, that was what he was most excited about, was then building those uh arterial roads in the long term.
Yeah, there's really a lot of not only excitement, but a lot of support uh from DOT. Uh, which is really important because it can help us get funding to build that. Um, but the priority between building out the bypass on the north side, which is that six, ten, twelve, um, we did go forward and get Federal Transportation Improvement Board, that's what TIB means for funds for that first segment from Hayford to Garfield. And so that is in the process of of acquiring all of the necessary easements and right-of-way and then moving into design, so that that is moving forward as well, but but that was a little bit higher priority for requesting money right now.
Nice. Well, I'm sure Cal can attest, that area has just gotten crazy busy over the past couple of years.
Big, lot of changes in the last two years.
Yeah.
Absolutely, um. But but that's that's uh what's happening, uh Mark, for what's gonna happen to that intersection in the the very short-term future.
Thank you, Heather.
Anybody else have anything before I move on to staff report? Thank you, the commissioners. Let's move into the staff reports, if any staff has anything to say.
You wanna go first, Zach?
Sure, I don't really have anything. Um, we've been working really hard on this Smart Growth America grant, um which we just told you guys about, so not gonna talk about that anymore. Other than that, you know, I I know it's a broken record, but you know, the closer we get to summer, the busier we get, so you know, we're working on. I I don't even know. I have a lot of projects right now, so current planning is uh is being really busy, so uh yeah. Just appreciate you guys being here and, you know, giving your feedback and uh Stephanie, thanks for coming. It's great to uh to meet you, so yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you, Zach.
Uh, well, Zach's right, so we just received the final subdivision for um Hunter's Crossing North First Edition, so that's eighty-five lots uh north of Highland Village, so they'll be uh finishing the subdivision on that this year, and their goal is to be having housing contractors build houses by this fall up in that area. Um, so you'll see some new construction in that area uh realm. We um have been working on a potential urban growth area boundary change with Spokane County, which is over north of Deer Heights, north of actually Twelfth Avenue. It's called the Ewing and Oswald application. They applied to Spokane County to modify Airway Heights Urban Growth Area. Um, Chief Free Press is gonna do a article on it. It'll be out, I I think, this week about that application, so it's a proposal to bring a hundred and eighty acres into Airway Heights Urban Growth Area Boundary with potential for uh addition for more land for residential, commercial, industrial development, so there'll be a lot of a lot of talk about that um this year uh moving forward. Um, of course, we just touched briefly on the potential sale of the Spokane Raceway property by Spokane County to the Kalispel Tribe um and the opportunity that presents with the the plan. Um, the county, I think, has a thirty-day timeline to consider the offer on the property. And as mentioned, Airway Heights has a first right of refusal on just about thirty acres of that, two hundred and fifty acres. And so the council um will be weighing in on that first right of refusal as well as the county weighing in on the offer. It was four point seven million. I think Angelina was the offer on the property. Uh, so a lot happening for sure. Um, we talked about the roadway development project between uh Hayford and Garfield. Um, we are also participating in a in a project with Washington State Department of Transportation, multiple agencies, so the tribes, um Spokane County, City of Spokane. Um, um, their first ever kind of what they call a lab is to look at um transportation solutions for US two. And I'm happy to announce that um DOT seems to really embrace the downtown plan draft that we have, uh which is going to hearing next Monday with city council. Um, and helping, you know, trying to make sure that there's initiatives within it to help us move forward, so like, you know, frequent and and safe pedestrian crossings across US two uh as an example of of the downtown plan being put into the US two corridor uh development options. So uh a lot of projects moving through the pipeline, both physically now as well as in concept um that's gonna change the face of Airway Heights in the short term. Uh, but that uh hopefully that's everything you might want to. A little long range.
Thank you, Heather and Zach for the report. Uh, I guess the next meeting is gonna be uh June ninth, twenty twenty-one, just from the agenda. If there's no further questions or comments, I would like to adjourn the meeting at uh eight PM.
Hey, Cal, just one quick question.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, it's it's.
It's after the meeting.
It's it's kind of an off-question anyway, but I was curious, what kind of antennas are mounted on that green and white water tower there in Sunset Park? Are those cellular antennas? Do you know?
I think so. From what I know, there's cellular antennas. I don't know if Heather or Zach knows, but I'm pretty sure those antennas are definitely for cellular service.
Cellular, okay.
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you for your time, effort. As usual, it's nice to see you guys on every Wednesday once a month, right?
What happened to a short one, Cal? You said a short little meeting.
Short is two hours, long is four hours. Hey, uh, I just wanted to ask you a question, Mark. You know, I I think next meeting, if you want to chair so that if I am not here, you don't get to chair by by uh surprise. So is Heather that okay for him to do?
That should be no problem, Cal.
I like to do that because I, you know, sometimes I might not come, and I don't want to tell you at the last minute and then you just get a bombshell, so next meeting, I'd like you to chair and just get the experience. I'll be there, but I would like you to do that.
Hey, by the way, welcome aboard, Stephanie.
She hasn't been approved by the council, yeah.
I think it's academic, but anyway, I wanted to wish Stephanie welcome.
All right, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting now at eight or two PM. Thank you.
Thanks, Cal. Thanks, Heather.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Zach.